Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 12th, 2011. It's on or about 7:00 P.M. This evening, City Council is going to be meeting in a series of four different committee meetings, beginning with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Chair Chris Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Elias. First, I would like to bring forward a PUD, Plan Unit Development Proposal, that has been okay by the Planning Commission for Hickory Street. And we have actually talked about this development several times in the past year and a half or two years. The Planning Commission has unanimously recommended to City Council their approval for this Plan Unit Development. And Kevin Klein is here to talk about it tonight and discuss it. I understand that beyond the Planning Commission, you also have to look at Shade Tree approval and engineering approval and such. And I understand that you've met with the Shade Tree Commission and that the city engineers reviewed it and such. So I would like to invite Kevin Klein up to talk about his project.
Yes, Chris, I think you were on the committee when I first brought this in 2008. So it's been a three-year project. I've been taking my time and doing my homework. But yes, I have been through the steps and processes that are in place with the PUD, have been before the Planning Commission a couple of times, and worked on some of the details that they sent me back to do my homework on. And we have completed all of those, and they gave me the approval, as well as met with the Tree Commission last Thursday night and got an approval from them as well. So here I am with the next step in the process. Really, just to answer questions you all might have, I don't know how much you all have seen about it, but...
Can you describe a little bit about the project itself, so we can reiterate with the council members?
It involves three parcels right behind CNE Grocery and Hardware Store off Richland Avenue. And it'll be three duplex units that have two bedrooms in each unit. They're configured in a courtyard situation just for, more for the aesthetics, I guess, of that neighborhood, so they aren't having to look at the back of the store and the things that are there. There is an existing parking lot that will be used for the tenants. It's been there 30-plus years. It was CNE employee parking. I purchased that in 2008 as well. So that one parcel is the parking, and then the other two and some other smaller parcels that are with that make up the property that would have these units go on. So the structure or the parking lot will be as-is, and the three units will be built on the other two properties, just to the south of the parking lot.
And from the Planning Commission's point of view, was there any variance needed or anything?
There's only one variance needed for the lot size. It is 0.85 acres, where the normal, I believe, is two acres. This, as I say, he said three duplexes, a total of 12 beds, I believe.
Correct.
Yes. And again, this, they were actually housing some structures on that earlier, so they've been torn down quite some time. He's been working on it. So the only variance is the size.
Right. I'd like to point out that the variances for lot size, we're running up against more and more, because I think that when we're doing infilling, we're going to run up against this. So that's something that the Planning Commission may want to look at in the future, changing requirements for PUD, requirements for PUD and such.
I think that's in the subdivision regs, which actually falls outside the purview of the Planning Commission. We can look at it.
Right.
We are not required to look at it, and we can now.
But this is something, because we're doing more redevelopment, infilling, smart development, that this is something that makes sense for the city to be able to have PUD control over things that are smaller and such, to give more input from the city level and the citizens' level. So is there any questions from Chris?
Just a question about the physical location of the parking lot or the spaces that have been purchased. It's a CNE parking lot. Is this the one that's next to the end of the building?
Oh, no, it's right behind the CNE building.
It is behind?
It's lots Hickory. It's up the hill. It's actually a little bit of climb there.
It's all continuous property behind CNE.
Okay.
It's not a separate lot down beside CNE. It's up behind.
Continuous, behind it.
It's always been, it's 30-some years old.
Okay.
Let me scoot this over to the house outside.
And I think I've looked at the plans before, but it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
The City Council took a...
If the CNE is over here, here's Hickory Street, Canada Way would be over here.
Right.
And this is actually over towards this end here.
Okay.
You can't see it from street level because it has a little bit of an elevation. You're welcome to keep us.
Okay, thank you.
And how many, how many spaces there, Kevin?
Well, there are 10 there on the parking lot, but there'll be 12 units or 12 beds.
Right.
So the other spots are, one building right down at the street level is to garage. So the lower level basement would be garage. Then there's also two other spots over by the south end property. Would you like to see plans or without?
Those are the mini plans. If you want to see the full size, so you don't have to squint, who's got them?
It was an existing parking lot, and that's what you...
Yeah, but I was just asking you how many spaces there were.
Be a total of 14 by using the two garage spaces.
Okay.
Why don't you just give you a little background about the property? There used to be two structures on 34, and used to be a house years ago on 36. So there's 32 is the parking lot, 34 was two houses, and then 36 was a house probably 10 years ago that was demolished. All three properties have curbs, driveways, that I'll be using those existing ones for the parking. One for a two-spot right by the south end building, and then the two under the building for a garage space, and then the 10 in the parking lot. The buildings I'm putting up are, I think they're 28 by 38. The square footage, the footprint of what I'm putting back there is 500 square feet more than what used to be there back in 2008. There was a house and a garage, and I had already a permit in 2008 to build a two-bedroom house on Lot 36. So I would have gone even farther as far as square footage on that property. So to give some perspective, it's not a big development. It's not high rises and all that. It's basically three houses on three lots, but one lot is used for parking, and the other three houses are in a U-shaped configuration to make the courtyard. So just so we understand, it's not a major development in that neighborhood. And the one thing I must say too, in the very beginning, I went to John Ballantor with this idea of doing a big long building much like you see across from the old Morrison School. And he's like, "No, you don't want to do that." He convinced me to do something that fits the neighborhood, that looks like three houses, and will, you know, fit that area much better, so...
I just wanted to say, and I did see the plans at the Shade Tree Commission meeting. It looks like it will be a pretty, pretty good use of that space and a good example, I hope, when it's finished, of the right way to do things, assuming that it gets through everything successfully. Thanks for putting a lot of thought into this.
I'd like to say that this is something that we've been looking at a lot with, between the Planning Commission and the Development Planning Committee, is infill and looking at other, better uses of property. And I'm encouraged, because this isn't four units per apartment or five units per apartment. And this is something that the comprehensive plan has talked about, is affordable housing for people other than student quote-unquote rentals. It could be young graduate students, you know, first-year faculty, because it's two units, and I'm very encouraged by this. And so I very much support the infill idea and the small development idea of this. Something that I see that needs to happen is that plans need to be put in the council office, because we will have to have a public hearing about this through the PUD development process. The city engineer needs to review and okay on this plan. I'm not sure at that process, they put...
Yeah, the staff signed off on it earlier this year.
And it says here the dumpster location needs to be resolved. That's something that the Planning Commission... And the recommendations don't say anything from the Planning Commission, the recommendation, letter of recommendation to the council doesn't say anything about the variance, so it probably just needs to be rewritten to mention the variance.
You don't mention it, okay.
Because we will be there voting on the variance, so...
And we can provide you with the staff review notes or...
Yes, and that should be just put with the information. So is there any other questions from council? I think this is great, great project, and we appreciate all the work and perseverance that you've put into that.
I appreciate your patience too, because it's taken me a while. Thank you.
No, thank you. So can you put a public hearing, schedule a public hearing for that?
Should have been announced. Aaron should have...
15 days. Get one hit on. Second agenda item I have is the East State Street annexation of the Old Columbia Gas property. And I invite Mike Adam up. This has been on our agenda before, and we have talked about this. And this is, if one visualizes the map of Athens...
Right back there.
Right, right here. This is, this is property right here. A lot of, these are property that can be annexed into Athens. And I think it's great, because it's right next to the, where Diagnostic Hybrids is. It's a great potential development area for, for different...
Industry.
Industry projects. And I think it's also an interesting process that the owners of the property have gone through, because they are not only concerned about annexation, which has a whole list of benefits for the property owner, but they're also looking at the impacts that annexation would have on the township. And that's what this, this discussion that we're going to have this evening is about, is their interesting proposal with the township trustees in Athens City about, I don't know, revenue sharing. I don't know what you would call it. How would you describe it, Mike?
I think that's pretty good. Yeah, the township has been fearful over the last probably 10 years of losing major pieces of land to have potential generating revenue for their township. And our suggestion was that we phase that revenue sharing out with the idea that as we develop the property, and hopefully once it's annexed into this city and has sewer and water capabilities, that all of a sudden the value of that property would greatly increase on the tax revenue side, therefore equally increasing their revenue that over the long term, they actually gain more by having that piece of property annexed into the city. And the fact that because the value of the property greatly increases if it's developed properly then. And so, but for us to have it developed properly, I think we need to get sewer and water on it. Not many people are going to look at it, because they would have to go through this process we're doing right now. And most individuals who will invest in that piece of property will probably want to turn it around fairly quickly, once they decide to go with the project. And to have a delay of, you know, nine months to a year can greatly stymie any kind of development that could occur there. So that was the whole reason we came up with the concept.
Now, so to lay it out is that there's a, normally when a piece of property is annexed, the taxes fold into the annexed city. So if you annex the property, it would go directly into the city. But what you're asking is, as long as the piece of property is not developed, and it's not a burden onto the city, that the property taxes go to Canaan Township.
That's correct. As soon as we would start the development, at that point, then the whole formula would kick in, because revenue greatly improves for the city, because of the state law, and Adam can better describe that to you than I can. But the revenue greatly increases with the developments, then therefore the city makes up with it. They also gain, city schools gain from that, as well as potential jobs, potential in tax income from employment taxes also increase. So it has a win-win for both the city as well as Canaan Township.
However, from my understanding of Ohio Rise Code, is that the township cannot stop the annexation if you didn't do this?
That's correct.
Right. So this is a way of lessening the tax burden upon Canaan Township. I know Canaan Township has been very upset with Athens City for various reasons, and so this is a way of cooperating with the outlying township. And the, a way of the business owners and business community of communicating and cooperating with the various entities. Is that a fair...
I would say that'd be a fair...
I mean, I personally, I think that Canaan Township trustees should be very appreciative of a property owner that would want to go through this process, because it's a less cumbersome process than if you just went through an annexation process. So I think that's a way of helping to lessen the tax burden. And the thing that I look at, that we've discussed previously, was the only thing that Athens would, when it's not developed, when the piece of property is not developed, it's just sitting there. The only thing that would cost Athens money is if there's some kind of fire call or something out there.
If you had a breast fire or something like that.
Yeah, and that's not in the letter, so I'd like to see that put in the letter that we're trying to look at as a, as...
Yeah, I thought, didn't we have at one time a clause in there about...
Yes.
If we had a fire, we would pay for that, that cost of that.
So I would like to see that as input into the letter.
And the other concept was, you know, if development, once development would start, then the reverse happens, because you have the potential of theft. At that point, we would want such things as police protection for people who might go there and, you know, take wiring or piping or anything like that as we're developing it.
But that would kind of kick into a regular annexation process, so... Is there questions?
We're talking about property taxes here, the bulk of which go to schools and to HAVAR. And so how much money are we actually talking about? A pretty small amount, I imagine, right?
Yes. And the city, the schools are not losing out any, in any of their property taxation or it's just the little bit that goes to the city.
So Canaan Town, so we're going to sign away $5,100 in real estate taxes that would normally come to the city with annexation in favor of this process?
How much of the 5,000 would go to the city?
Less than 30%.
Oh, 5,000, yeah, that's what, all right. I thought 5,000 was the amount. That was my question.
Most of it is.
30% less than that.
Right.
So that's less than that. We're talking...
We're talking, you know, $1,200 with the potential of, we were studying the one site of putting as capable, just one five-acre tract is capable of housing a 60,000 square foot tech building, high-tech building. If you look at the potential of people within that building and the paycheck on that, it just quickly balloons of the incomprehensible city.
The only thing I'm concerned about is, I think people get confused with taxes. I mean, there's this whole thing about taxes, and property taxes are generally used in the city to fund city schools, but in that part of the country, they are funding, not Nelson, New York, but what's the other one? Federal hawking, right? I mean, there's no way the money will go to Fed hawking, even if it comes into the, I mean, to anything but Fed hawking if it comes into the city, because the mall goes to Fed hawking, right?
But that's the nice thing about the form of what we pointed out over the next five years, is figuring, hopefully, we've been invested already with the corporation that owns this piece of property, is that this piece of property will turn around fairly quickly once annexation happens. You know, at that point, then, the formula for paying off, because it starts out at 90%, drops it to 75, 60, and on down and on down, but, but the value of the property is greatly increasing it. And we were looking at, you know, best-case scenario, over a seven-year period, that it could potentially generate over a million dollars in tax revenue for federal hawking school and for Canaan Township and alone, which right now, they get 5,000 a year, it's $35,000 out. I mean, it's, it's a great, great benefit to township for that piece of property to develop and to be able to have the sewer and water to make it develop a little bit.
I don't think there's any discussion about whether we want to develop this piece of property or not. It's just how we want to go about, and it makes the most sense for the landowners and such, and to support them in the process of the annexation and development. I mean, I think that this is, this piece of property makes a huge amount of sense to have as development, and so...
The property next to it is almost 100% full.
Right.
And so you see there is a market for that area. I think the university is going to continue to develop high-tech jobs from the university. So there is a need for a growth area, and hopefully we would fill that void over the next five to 10 years.
So it's a question of how we want to support this, this process. So what you're asking for is to look at this annexation letter with Canaan Township trustees to, to say that we would have no problem with it when you went through the annexation process, because this will be addendum to the annexation process, or however it will be put into the ordinance at one point.
So we're only talking about land, right? We're not talking about building?
Resi.
So, and so I think that we need to clarify so that in the future, and you all will be probably dealing with this, but what about the next annexation? Will everybody be doing this? And where does it stop? I mean, you know, it's a valuable piece of land. It was picked up because it was valuable. It's worth more now. I guess I don't understand why the developer can't afford to do it. And I don't, I think Canaan Township will get their share of the school taxes, and I don't know, maybe it's a sop because of the things that have happened before, but I...
It's, it's the same cost to the developer, one way or the other.
Yeah.
Basically, it's, it's basically lessening the burden on, for example, if the property would, you know, stay as it is, undeveloped, they're just going to get 5,000 a year. This way, hopefully, you can move quicker forward and benefit everyone involved.
And 5,000 is the total cost, of which the vast majority goes to the federal hawking school district. Isn't that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, you know, the more we talk about giving away $5,000, the worse it sounds. And so I'd like someone to tell me approximately how much this entails before it goes any further. I mean, is it $2.50? Is it $17? Is it $100?
You mean, you mean the city of Athens?
No, I mean, how much will we lose, but with this process? I think we just...
You mean the city of Athens?
Yep, that's what I mean. Because we're, you know, our job is really to look out for our interests, not the developers' interest.
But I think, I think as it stands now, you have a piece of property, if it doesn't get annexed, we're not going to get anything. If we have a letter that says that we're going to go through this process, the real estate taxes will slowly, I mean, we don't get that much money in real estate taxes that as it is.
Exactly. I'd like to know how much it is, because I think it's confusing, and I don't want, since we're short a million dollars in another year, I think we have to be careful.
But I think also, we have to look at the kind of cooperative agreement with Canaan Township trustees. I mean, this is...
Or it could be Dover, it could be Athens.
Yes, but I think that...
Where does it stop?
Well, I don't, I don't know if it's us being so, we're not giving up a lot, because if the taxes are going to the same entities as previously, until it's, I mean, until it's developed, then I think that the school is the one who potentially has to look out for itself.
The Fed Hawk?
Fed Hawk.
They get the same, no matter what.
But if it's a million dollars?
The property doesn't divert to Athens City Schools, it still stays in...
That was, that was confusing when you said that earlier, that's why...
Yeah, it stays in the Federal Hawk. And so the benefit to Fed Hawk is, yeah, and it is now, and from there, they're going to gain from that increase in tax base also, so...
And I think that on one level, the city is going to be protected, because of, when we write the amendment into it that says that if the police, the fire department are called out, then that's kind of covering what would normally be covered if it was just an undeveloped piece of property in Athens. So, and, I mean, you could go through without this process and just annex it without worrying about Canaan Township trustees. I mean, that's the thing, is that you're trying to, to cover Canaan Township trustees and their tax burden. That's the, and so...
I think the goal was also to hope move it quickly through the process, because the property has basically, was purchased five years, six years ago, and hasn't developed. And because everyone sees that as a piece that needs city sewer and water, and we've been working on this for almost a year now, getting the letters, meeting with Canaan Township, and it just seems, okay, let's try to make this move quicker, so it can happen better, instead of forcing it down their throats.
But could they, I mean, the, the point is that they could not stop it.
Technically, they couldn't, but I think they, anyone can file a suit in any court and, and drag something out. I mean, could end up being another project across the river or something where it just gets...
Bogged down.
Bogged down. And the idea is that we want to move this thing forward quicker while we have the opportunity.
Jim?
And Mr. Noel just kind of alluded to, my question is, where are Canaan Township trustees with this agreement?
They were, in our first couple of meetings, very anti...
Hostile.
Hostile. And so we went back to the second time, and that's when I came up with the idea and showed them that for them to be hostile over the long term could cost them, because technically, under the statutes, it could be annexed in, and the formula set up by the state of Ohio and how the taxes divert from a percentage over a certain period of time, you know, the best they were going to do at that point is maybe $35,000, $40,000 in tax revenue with that. But if, we can get this thing kicked in with some quicker development, I mean, the numbers just go out the roof at that point, because we add in property value with the improvements of utilities and putting buildings on it and stuff like that, which pushes the numbers way up, and they greatly benefit from it, so... And so the idea was that instead of forcing this down their throat and kicking it in now, why not come up with a concept of waiting until we start the development, and then at that point, the formula that is established by the state kicks in, which offsets any losses they might see over there. And so that was the idea. And our hope is, and we've had several interested parties in the property, is that, you know, within the next 24 months, that we'll see something happen with at least one of the five-acre tracts. And we're always looking for a project.
I just need to make council aware, in the previous agreement, if you recall from back in May, there was a timeframe established, and this one, it says that this will continue unabated until the land is developed. I'm not sure, I think you need to be aware of that in terms of a change. Also, it was my understanding that the law director was doing some review.
I think that we need to have a report from the law director, because I think the, the term "development" needs to be defined.
What about taxes?
Well, I mean, I think that once it's annexed in all the... What was that, Nancy?
I just wanted to know what about taxes? And they're going to be 20% more if it's not inside the city. I mean, there are, I would like to know exactly how much money is involved in this before we go on with the study.
So you would like to see a breakdown of what the scenario is? If nothing develops there? If we put a million-dollar building there, what it looks like? Taxes concerning when the annexation, when the taxes go in? Is it in annexed or not annexed? This type of...
That's going to be part of it, yeah.
And mind you, we do want this property annexed in the city, and if you're, it's just kind of looking at the...
We will do, true, and we'll do. I mean, we've been down that road five years ago. They thought they were going to get sued about it. We'll wait.
May I guess one of the questions is, if we didn't do this process, would it be easier to annex it? to annex it?
I don't think so.
That's a question they have to answer.
I mean, that's something that you have to look at. I mean, I'm very supportive of annexation, and I would like to see it. And on one level, it's kind of disappointing that Canaan Township would stand in, you know, in the, in the, in the way of development of this piece of property, because of attitude towards the city, I think, is part of it. So, so I think what we need to see from, from you guys is a breakdown over the years, because one of the other letters that we have had from you was a breakdown of all the different costs over, over time, and the inclusion of a fire department call in the letter. Other concerns?
I just wanted to second that I would like to see some kind of worksheet, so that I better understand what the city, what we would be committing ourselves to. Worksheet.
Have you discussed this with the county commissioners?
We have not.
I would suggest that you kind of parallel track with this, with them.
Well, we wanted to get the city on board first.
I mean, I think we're very supportive of the annexation, and we want to work with you to get this. And we want to see this go through. And what we have to do with Canaan Township trustees is always an issue, a challenge on many levels. And so we want to work and see how this goes out.
It's easier to go to the county commissioners if we have this settled with the township and the city, and it becomes, at that point, just a rubber stamp on it, because the county will not have any concerns. They're interested in developing jobs also.
And we are too. I think that we just need to iron out the details. I think that would be a fair discussion, so. And I think it's great, I am, it's exciting, because with all sorts of stuff that's going on, I think that it would be a very great piece of property to bring into the city and develop it. So, any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. See you.
Last, before miscellaneous, is we have a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission on amending the definition in the zoning code 23.10, .10, .01, of adding a definition, changing parking area to include a new table of all-street bicycle parking requirements. And I know Chris has been working with the Bike and Pedestrian Planning Committee. They're the ones who brought this to the planning commission, so if we do, it's pretty mundane. It's just changing definitions.
It is changing definitions, yes. And what it would do is, on new developments, it would set requirements for that. And the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee was supportive of the language that's been drafted for it. Mayor Wile, do you have the?
Essentially, it's, we have parking requirements for cars, it's added additional parking requirements for bike racks in certain areas, new development. Adds a definition of short-term parking, definition of parking area to include bicycles, and then a Table D, it would have assistance, we have in our zoning code a requirement of public parking spaces for square footers of buildings. So Table D would be altered, and you're going to have to have a public hearing on this anyway, so people will hear about it sooner or later. Commercial retail, restaurant uses and similar facilities, minimum four bicycle parking spaces, plus two for every additional 10,000 square feet after the first 10,000 square feet. So a 10,000-square-foot restaurant would require four places for a bicycle.
Right.
Which is not a lot of room.
But, yes.
Also, multi-residential is included, too. Bicycle parking for each permitted bedroom. If required, the number of bicycle parking spaces exceeds 16, at least half the required spaces shall be covered by current guidelines adopted Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. If you remember, Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan had an element in there about having sheltered bicycle parking. And that's, so that covers mostly right there. We batted about, you should have gotten a recommendation by now, I believe. Is that what you were working on?
Yes, we have that. So we need to have a public hearing on this. Any questions from council? Any miscellaneous about planning and development?
I just want to add one more comment about the bicycle racks. We've had, there's a subcommittee of 12 people that meets regularly, and we're in the process of doing inventories around town, but the consistent comment that we get from the regular bicycles, bicyclists, are, you know, one of the best ways to encourage this is to have bike racks. And so I think this is a real positive development to get this added into code.
And in the comprehensive plan, remember, there was the bike plan, there was discussion of having storage, long-term storage as well, and that's something that might be considered in the future, but, you know, taking locations. I've also had commentary from people who say there are a lack of bike racks in certain areas within the city. In particular, the last petition was someplace on North Court, but that's, that's our level of stuff, not yours. So there is, I know a lot more bicycles around, and I don't know if you've noticed that or not, but we've got more bicycles in public.
Question, just talking about multifamily, multi-residentials.
Multi-residentials.
Would that include houses with three or more students?
Probably talking about apartment complexes.
Apartment complexes.
And new ones, yes.
Twoplexes.
So in other words, if you're building another, I don't know, Madison, whatever it is, Heights, you probably want to put some bike racks there.
Okay. Okay, but not, okay, that's fine. I'm just wondering, because I see, I see houses that are, that are student rentals on Congress Street, for instance, front yards with five or six bicycles laying around, so it might, at some point, we might pick them up. But this particular proposal is not doing that.
Any more questions, comments? So we will schedule a public hearing for that, and go on forward. Any miscellaneous? Thank you. Let's see, and the planning and development.
Moving on to the Transportation Committee, Committee Chair Christine Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three agenda, two agenda items and several miscellaneous items tonight. The first one being a request from the Alumni Association at Ohio University, and this is for an outdoor concert and beer garden to be sponsored by Ohio Brew Week, and it would occur on homecoming weekend on Friday, October 13th. I've sent around a material prepared by the university, and Kristi Guzka is here to give us some of the details tonight.
Thank you for allowing me some time on your council meeting this evening, and certainly, if there's anything here that I haven't provided, please feel free to ask questions. This is the first time I've done this, so I tried to provide as much information as possible, but what we are looking at, as the Alumni Association, is providing an opportunity to have a large event for the general alumni population returning back to Athens for the weekend. So the idea is a mini block party on West Union Street at the intersection of Court and in College, and you can see the map on reverse. We've reached out to Dan Gates in Melody Sands with Ohio Brew Week to provide a beer garden, and as you can see, we're working with them to provide an Ohio alumni brewmaker connection within that area there. We do have musical performances, we're working with university events to provide the stage, electrical requirements, et cetera, for the two bands that we have, and also the marching one-time percussion will start their uptown tour at that, at that event as well. And we'll be providing signage and promotion, et cetera. So we've reached out to some area businesses for sponsorship and backing of this event, but really what we're here tonight asking is just the okay for the closure of that street. And then, sort of on the flip side, we want to include the local buggies, so that we do have a sort of eatery, one location for our alumni to really kind of congregate there. We do have giveaways and goodies for our alumni returning back, but it's to provide another entertainment opportunity on Friday evening.
Okay. And I know that that was one of the concerns, to be including the local vendors, so that's good news to hear that.
Yes.
And Paula, have we been checking with Athens Police and Fire?
I have. Do you have an additional copy? I didn't receive one.
I can, I can give you this one if you'd like to not got it while we're speaking.
The issue is, we have to maintain a 16-foot fire lane, and we normally do that on the south.
South side of Union.
Where the parking is, now the parking meters.
By the monument.
Close this button.
We need, we need a pathway to get a fire engine down, and usually that's the location we've done before.
Okay. I believe it might require suspending of the vending license, because you're going to be vending in this, or.
We have your own vending, right?
We would like to work with the existing vendors that have, and bear with me, sorry, just because I don't understand the permits, we would like to work with those who already have the permits established for that area. So Alibaba's, Burrito Buggy, et cetera, to offer them to say, just because if approval or closing the street, we still want you to be a part of the event and have your, you know, your vending within that area, too.
Do you plan to have additional vending of your own?
We do not. We do not.
I guess that's the question, whether we need to suspend it or not.
The vending of alcohol? Does that not?
You're going to have to move some across the street.
From A to B to A.
A to B, or B to A, but.
But that can be provided for.
But generally, they did not feel there'd be an issue. In the past, the police have requested that you have security when there is alcohol being served on the street.
Okay.
And I would also like this presented to the AAUBA, the Athens Uptown Business Association. They meet this Wednesday morning at 8:30. Downstairs, first floor, conference room.
I'll bring the local businesses in on Court Street, so if you want to approach them anyway, this is a chance.
It sounded like that.
Okay.
And we did have a concern about the vendors that already hold licenses, and it sounds like you've already addressed that, so.
And for the security, if I may ask a question, would that be, since it's, it's city property, would we go through the Athens Police Department to do so, or how would we?
Normally, they all, you can start there, and they usually go through the FOP for those kind of events.
And you'll need a F license permit for a living?
And gratefully, Ohio Brew Week is taking care of that for us, so I've, I've gone through that once before. It's a tedious process, so they graciously agreed to do that.
They need to start. There's like a 30-day, so it has to happen right away, and I, it would also require, yes, it would. Because we don't have time.
Suspense call, emergency calls.
I'd like to see in the future, more planning ahead. I mean, this is only October 16th that this is going to occur, so, I mean, it's very difficult for us to look at all the issues. I mean, the city does a great job of being able to turn around things, but I think that, on one level, it's not fair to the city to be saying, you know, do it, it's an emergency for us, so it's become an emergency for you, so.
They actually approached someone in our administration in August, but again, that was recent. There's normally, unless your grandfather, a fee associated with a closing, this is a simple closure from EPW, and it may be similar to the $250, was that what it was going to be for that same street?
And, and.
Council can choose to.
A fee may be appropriate, because my understanding is that Brew Week is not a nonprofit. Is that, have they changed that?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I think that, on one level, looking at this, if it's a commercial, whether it's a nonprofit entity that's doing part of this, I know Alumni Association is a nonprofit, but it's Brew Week. I've heard complaints about that.
My, my understanding was they were a nonprofit, but we look at it, so.
We could check, check further on that. And the timeline, Councilmember Fall, I would agree, you know, if you decide it's successful and a good event, and want to repeat it next year, it would probably be helpful for us to be seeing the legend, you know, and introduction of that in June, knowing that we have our last readings in July, before we break in August. That would be a nice timeline, and then we wouldn't have to be suspending the rules.
And thank you for letting me know that timeline. So the entire month of July is.
August, August we do not meet, and we review ordinances every other week.
Okay.
So typically, an ordinance for its three readings would take six weeks.
Okay.
So if we want it passed by the end of July, you should have it introduced to us by mid-June, which would mean have it come to our committee by the, either last week of May, actually, or the first week of June.
Right.
And then that will allow for the proper sequencing on it.
Great. Thank you very much for letting me know that information.
Like most good plans, it takes time.
Are there any other questions that council members have about the plans or the map? Okay, great. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
The next agenda item that we have is the Athens County Fairground, a renewal of the parking lease. And this is a lease that's renewed once every six years. What we didn't realize, we didn't have the tickler system in order, president bias, and we apologize, but it did expire in August, it needs a new ordinance. And what this allows, it, the lease is with the Athens County Agricultural Society, and it's for our use of the fairgrounds for parking. So we'll be bringing that forward if there aren't any problems with that or.
Same terms?
Same terms.
Same terms.
Yeah.
As they said, 50/50 is not bad. And I, I must apologize for the lapse in the terms of the agreement, but as I'm looking at 011306, it was also passed under an emergency.
There's three, that's right. Are we making money on it? I know our numbers of parkers have gone down.
We're pretty low right now.
Pretty low. We've done some advertising even to update that. We're going to a different system in terms of the hang tags will actually be different colors, fall, winter, spring, so easily more identifiable of rogue parkers, so.
Rogue, rogue parkers.
Ones you haven't paid lately.
Okay.
One suggestion for the advertising might be to link it with a go-bus. I mean, I don't know, people are really watching that, the ridership has been in the thousands for us since we opened last November, and that might be kind of a way to coordinate, you know, they can have the car here, you know, if they're eligible, and be able to park it long-term and use the bus at other times.
Okay.
Okay.
It would be hard to believe that the students are not bringing as many cars to campus as they were 20 years ago, so it would be the opposite, wouldn't it, I would think, but maybe not.
Well, more, more large complexes are providing large parking lots.
Because of our demands. I think that's all out of business.
Okay. Two, two other brief announcements. One is that on the 19th of September, we will be having the opening for, or the ribbon-cutting for the new bike pass spur at the West State Street Park, and just to invite the public to attend and see, take a look at it, consider riding your bikes more often or walking down in that area. The other one, and I'm not sure, Ryan, if we can pan to this image, this is from Burgess and Nightbull, and Paula shared this with us last week, but we thought we wanted, would share it to the public as well. It's a publication by the engineering firm, it's an international engineering firm that helped us with our roundabout, and so Athens, Ohio is featured on the front page. And some, you know, some very good press on this being part of a complete streets design focus on safety and accessibility, and so it's nice for Athens, Ohio to get that international kind of attention to it. So, and I think Andy is quoted in here, that people go out of their way to travel this corridor, and I, and I do, we, it's usually once a week that I have somebody come up and say, I was a skeptic, but I have to apologize, I'm using. I'm using it, and I like it." So I hope it continues to be an asset for our community, and also just one of those things that, you know, we talk about with a comprehensive plan, trying to make ways for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists to get around our city easily, and I think that's helping make that happen. Are there any other agenda items or miscellaneous items that people want to bring up for transportation? Councilmember Fall.
I've had several comments about the new speed limit indicators.
The SAM.
Oh, that's nice.
It was great. My kid said, well, it was on Morrison-Lewis, and he's like, where is it? Why is it on there right now that should be on every single stop sign?
I think they're about $3,000 apiece.
Well, you know, when an 11-year-old recognizes that it's helping getting to school, you know, that it's making an impact, so I really appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
We're collecting data with that, so...
Let's move on to the environmental committee. Committee Chair, Laura Gossner.
Thank you. The one item on my agenda tonight is our AEP franchise agreement, which outlines what's required for, as I like to put it, us to give them the privilege of using our public right-of-way to deliver electricity in the city. And I'm gonna pass out some draft language here. It's kind of, you're just passing it.
This is not the most... Got extra stuff?
Yeah. You guys have to share. So this is a, we had a 25-year contract from 1986. I think we need one more copy down there. 25-year contract from 1986, just recently expired, and we put a temporary extension in place for three months. There's one item that has been agreed to between AEP and the city, one major item, and that relates to tree trimming. So if you open the graph here, it's section four on the back of the first page, and so we'll go over that briefly here. Basically, this outlines an arrangement between the city and AEP that would facilitate better communication, the Service Safety Director's Office, and with AEP in terms of what trees are being cut when, and would allow the city a chance to go out and take a look at where the trimming is gonna happen, only related to public right-of-ways, not private property. The contract would only set these requirements in place for a public right-of-way. It also mentions, well, so that's the basic summary of what the tree section does. There's no requirement, if AEP does damage public trees, you know, we would assume that they would fix them and replace them if necessary, but there's not a requirement in there for that, which was something I would have liked to see, but that was not included. There are a couple other sections, and these relate to energy, renewable energy or energy use, and these are not, have not been seen by AEP. We discussed it briefly at a meeting that the mayor's office put together, and these are based on, part of it is based on something out of Ann Arbor, a franchise agreement they have in place that has been cited by our regional EPA office as a best practice for franchise agreements. And this is pretty important recently because the state, under new management recently, has cut the Advanced Energy Fund, or failed to renew it. So the Advanced Energy Fund, which provides incentives for renewable energy, no longer exists in Ohio firstly, and secondly, there is a proposal at the state level to do away with the bipartisan Advanced Energy requirement that would have required utilities to provide a certain percentage of alternative energy to customers statewide, and so there's a proposal to kill that at the state level right now. And so sections, right after the section four on trees, I have some draft language that would need a lot of work, but I wanted to put something in here as, just to put some eyes on it. And this would set forward, set in place requirements for the energy provided in the city by AEP, that a certain percentage of it come from advanced or renewable sources. And this is language taken almost directly from Ann Arbor's agreement with their electricity provider. And in terms of, you know, what percentages that would have to be decided, I would probably base it on what the state's requirement has been, and assuming that that's abolished by the state, this would be able to take the place of that requirement, at least for the city. And if you look on the next section, this is a proposal that will, of course, have to sit down with AEP, again, if it's something that council wants to pursue, and that would be to charge a small percentage, probably less than 1%, to AEP, 1% of their revenue from city sales, and that would allow the city to set up an energy, renewable energy fund, or energy efficiency fund. And because this has been cut at the state level, it's something that people in Athens no longer have access to, and with the number of renewable energy jobs that we have here in the area, it seems particularly important here in Athens to try, at least to make an attempt to try to lead the way on setting these types of programs up. So this is the first time the mayor's seen this. I know we discussed this a little bit in the AEP meeting, and this is actual language that would go in place in our agreement there. And so I'm open to comments from members of council first.
Thank you, Mr. Gossner. That's section five you're referring to right now, is that correct?
Six.
Six, sorry, six. And then I failed to relabel the last three sections, so ignore that, please.
And is that a model that we've seen in other communities as well, is also similar to something they're doing in Ann Arbor, too, or is that...
In Ann Arbor, they have similar language, it's used for a different purpose, and there are a few cities that charge franchise fees that don't go to a specific purpose. And so this would be charging a franchise fee that would go to, that the city would dedicate towards a specific purpose, whether the city would administer it, or whether we would have a nonprofit organization administer that.
That's the next question I have. That would have to be decided, do this process or paperwork, looking at applicants to determine who would be the recipient of this money?
Right, I mean, that would have to be decided down the line.
Here, your counsel, I like this, and I support it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Currently, we don't charge a franchise fee.
Correct.
But they're using our right-of-way and cutting trees that really, really make people upset. I think that charging a franchise fee is perfectly agreeable to me because they are getting a profit. I mean, it's not like the AEP is not a profitable company right now. I would, has the, Ambana seen this?
The tree commission has seen it.
Okay, the tree commission.
I don't know if it's in the, I've probably seen the final language.
Right, I would like to see something about tree replanting in it, because I think that we have, I know on the New York East Side, we really fought with them when they went through and hacked a bunch of trees. We really had to put a lot of pressure on them, and that, I don't, I think that that's something that people, when they were looking at the renewal of this agreement, really pressed, I know I've been getting a lot of pressure about, you know, our trees are sacred in a lot of ways, we are a tree city.
Yes.
And I think that we need to look at every method possible, if tree's going to be impacted, that they need to be protected or replaced.
Thank you. I do want to mention, the law director asked generic questions about what can be included in here, and he seemed to indicate to me that he didn't see a reason why we could not put these particular things in here, but it's not, something that has been done in Ohio, so it would be testing new water to include this and seeing how, seeing if it works, basically. He did believe that the, if we charged a franchise fee, that that would be tacked on to everyone's bill in the city, so we'd have to recognize that, at least according to the law director's view, or his opinion of how it would work, that the customers of Athens would be paying that franchise fee to be going towards the energy fund that the city would set up. So that would be a decision that, if it were to happen and go into place, that would be something we would be imposing on the residents of Athens.
So it wouldn't come off the comments?
The law director did nothing, so.
Just pass it along to us.
Hey, comments from the mayor's office.
I think that their section four, you pretty much captured the notes that I had, and this is concerning trees, and how they ruled the communication with the property owners, and what we agreed to when we were at the table. The section three, subject to relocation of the will of the city, that's looked new to me. So I don't know that AEP's testing that.
I did include that, I took that from other franchise agreements, so that's up to what AEP is comfortable with.
They will not be comfortable with that, but they're very content with the five-year, they're saying that this is 25.
That's a good point, too, where this was previously a 25-year agreement, the current draft, and what AEP agreed to was a five-year franchise agreement. So I'm okay taking that sentence out.
Let's see what happens first. Sounds like we need to have another meeting with them.
It does.
And I must say, I like section seven, because that is occurring, it seems to have occurred as they string broadband all over the city, and they have to pay to get it piped into City Hall, and there should be...
Could I not touch on that?
Well...
So there's another paragraph that was added here, and this was, my own language, was that if the utility poles, AEP's utility poles are used by other companies, that that has to be approved by the city, so they can't simply let anyone they like come in and install utility lines on those poles without having the city's permission first, which I, just seems sensible. I know when we were in the meeting, I brought up that, the question of, you know, who's using it, and, you know, are you getting fees for the usage of this, of our right-of-way for these other utility lines? And I didn't get an answer, so adding this would...
Something about a joint use agreement that we haven't seen.
A joint use agreement, that's right.
Again, as the medical broadband went right down East 2 Street, I can get it to the community center for, you know, $850 installation and a monthly fee, so...
So if they're not, number two.
Yes, at the, at the end of section four, I was just wondering, it says, in an emergency, if they have to deviate from the proper pruning techniques, following the emergency corrective pruning shall be done, should be done as soon as possible. Should there be a little timeframe on that, like maybe immediately, or as soon as possible?
I would agree with you, but AEP said they don't follow that guideline anywhere.
Oh.
They said they're okay with, just giving you my interpretation of what they said at the meeting was that, they say that they follow NCD A300 standards, but they also view them as recommendations, not strict guidelines that need to be followed, and this is not something that they generally engage in. They're not for the fact.
Oh, so they don't do...
They did say that for specific examples that the city brought to them, they would give attention to those.
So that's what we're attempting to do.
Perhaps when they're, if they visit council for the reading, the first reading of this, we can ask about that.
One of the issues, of course, is that they say they are in the electric business, not the tree trimming business, so electricity delivery is much more important than anything add subsequent to that. Just so we know.
And they contract, as you know, for their tree trimming services, so in an emergency situation, we all get it, you know, get the tree lines down, get our power restored, what have you, but it's the follow-up. So we've already had a case like that already this summer, where we had one of the electrical storms come through, and they did a much better job. I mean, within a week, they cleared up the debris that was on the tree lawns.
We probably need to look and see how long we extended it. I forget how long we made the extension for the...
Three months.
Three months, okay, so we have time.
So hopefully, it depends on how negotiates it's going with AEP. So I guess after the first meeting, we'll have a much better idea of what they're willing to talk with us about.
You can send us that chronic copy.
I will send this out shortly.
And if somebody in the public wanted to say something, too, you know?
You want me to?
If you had some input, you want it?
Hi, my name's Michelle. It's my first time. I live in, you know, Union Street, and I live near the depot pillars, okay, some of that hill, it needs to be trimmed. How am I saying? The last time I talked to you guys, five years ago, they had, they were scared to cut down certain trees, 'cause the cars was parked there. I just told them, ride that and put it in, put their tires, things in the paper, if they don't move the cars, if they don't, they can do like tow or something in certain spot. And I know some of the ivy is growing around the power lines right at that. And, you know, I was, I was thinking, but hey, how about you guys help out, you know, certain things? You know, the power, you know, how about the four people can't get to the houses because of the brush that they're, 'cause the last time, they had, it was on top, the safety car, they can't, it was parked at safety lane, but behind there, there's a lot of shrubbery right there, they can't get to the house, right? They had to go all the halfway around the house to get to the electrical fire, right there. Yeah, 'cause all the shrubbery and stuff, and it's right there, the power lines are...
It's through the power line area?
Yeah. And it's power lines, it's cable lines, and I think there's phone lines, too, like for, have fun, you know, people parked on that one side, and they can't get out half the cars. All that tree needs to be trimmed, you know, that side needs to be trimmed bad, too. I was thinking about, you know, some of your city workers has the green tractor, the bush hulk on it, I call it a bush hulk, 'cause I'm a thorn grower. I think, you know, it should be trimmed every two years, right there. You know, that way it kept, took care of some of the ivy and helped them keep all parking there, and that's been a good way to keep some of the bushes down, but, you know, the way to help you guys out.
Probably have someone from the city look at that area and determine if it's to be done.
Yeah, it's a partial, it's a communication aspect, and make sure they let it down. And I booked the Assistant Service Safety at the office to look at it as well.
Great.
Okay, so we'll be on it.
Good.
Thank you for bringing that to our country. So I will forward copy this, like I said, to everyone and to AEP as well, and hopefully we'll be able to set a meeting with them pretty quickly, within the next week or two.
I think you'll get a response.
I think we probably will have their attention with this. And am I saying it has any miscellaneous?
Just a reminder, everybody, that the Athens-Hawken Solid Waste District's policy meeting, a public hearing, is going to be October 26th, it's a public hearing at the inn at Hawken College in Nelsonville. This has to do with our strategy for our solid waste plan for the next five years. I believe I have a copy, quick, go ahead.
I left my copy on the table.
Okay. So there's a copy on change, council change.
And that's a, that's a five-year plan, covers two counties, Hawken and Athens, and it seems to me that in this plan, it's probably more substantial than some of the previous ones because of some of the changes, is that correct?
We're trying to modify how we do our recycling. Eventually, the concept is going away from a serving system if possible, but we still need to invest some money on it. The next round, the next five years, right now, how it's set up is that you're required to have certain amount of access to recyclable transfer stations and places to drop it off. In the future, the requirement will be reaching at 25% of recycling, which we as a city are there, but as a district, we're closer to the nine.
Yeah.
So we have ways to go, but that won't be, that will kick into another five years afterwards.
Well, it has to be passed first.
Right. And can I ask, does that plan have to go through council as well?
It will have to.
The lawmakers have to prove it.
Well, yeah, we have to disapprove of it. We did it once before or twice before, same plan?
It has to go through both counties, 60% of population, and agreed to by the major metropolitan areas. Some townships, and townships include, some townships have actually voted it down, but not the majority. Usually, what we've been seeing is Logan, the city of Logan has voted it down. So the timeline, this has to be submitted, I believe, the deadline is March 14th of next year. of next year, so the clock is ticking.
Great, well, thank you very much, and that's everything for the environment committee.
Finance and, of course, finance and personnel, we have one item on our agenda tonight, and that's auditor Kathy Hepp, gonna talk to us about centralized income tax collection and the horrors of it.
I put information in your boxes this afternoon, I hope everybody, does everybody have a copy or do they need extra copy? And this is just what I put together based on all the news articles, actually response from the Department of Taxation to, to local cities who've required about the centralized income tax collection. And so I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything I have on here. The actual number in Ohio is five hundred and seventy-nine municipalities that, that collect local income tax. And so this is what I came up with, as I said, these are all in information from other cities and from newspaper articles, which I forwarded everything I've gotten on to council members. So if you have any questions, you can refer to that. And I guess the last part, I was kind of, never written in evidence before, although I've seen plenty, but I kind of modeled that after other resolutions. There would be more to it, which I hoped Debbie would help with, you know, an introduction and the final, you know, this would be in full force kind of thing is on most of them, but I didn't bother putting everything in, and I didn't know if anybody had any, any other questions about anything that's on there, or if that's, those were all the reasons I came up with, if somebody might have reasons why council would, you know, not support that. The only other thing I could add is the deputy auditor Ray Hazlitt ran some figures as far as what it costs us to pay our two income tax administrators per year, plus a large percentage of our budget, which of course, part of that goes to their operations. And at the very most, we spend about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on our income tax, that's aside for refunds, of course, on operating our income tax department. I can't imagine, we have a ten million dollar income tax revenue, I can't imagine they would charge any less than two percent. The county auditor charges us three percent for administrative fees. So even at two percent, we would be losing some money. I also can't imagine that we wouldn't still have to have someone on staff to handle certain things regarding our income tax collection, whether it was one full-time or part-time person, which would then again, you know, decrease our revenue from that source. So, so anybody have any questions as far as that goes? Chris?
So, to boil it down, the city, the state's proposal is going to cause probably a loss of jobs and an increase of costs to us.
Absolutely.
I think that needs to be spelled out explicitly, that this is another.
I think I had that on my list, but I felt like I was, yeah, loss of jobs of two tax-paying individuals.
Local jobs and, I mean, this is a cost to city.
It's not revenue neutral.
It's not revenue neutral.
There you go.
I would point out that, and there's a philosophy out there, loss of public sector jobs is not a bad thing, for some people.
But you're in it. It's still a loss of jobs.
It is still a loss of jobs.
Or it's a, it's a transfer of jobs to the state level, or it's a transfer of duties to people who are probably already overworked. I mean, I think that this is an extraordinarily bad idea on the state level.
Well, it's very difficult, as you can imagine, five hundred and seventy-nine municipalities, we all have different needs, different tax rates. We also have different rules as far as what you can take as a loss, carry forward in your taxes. And that's something that we deal with in our department. As far as the motivating factors, I understand it behind this, is to make it easier for businesses to operate here. But I don't feel that that's a valid point. I don't think that any large business is gonna come to Athens just because we make it easy to file their taxes. If they're a big enough business to really benefit us, they have someone handling their taxes. We're talking about accountants, tax departments, this is what they do. A lot of businesses that deal with us have a payroll company that handles that, and this is what they do all the time. And as far as tax rates or changes, just like in my office, once you put it in your system, it's not like they have to stop every time there's a payroll and figure out who gets what money. Because unless, you know, the law changes, our income tax increases, which hasn't changed twice in the eight years I've been in office, it's not really a huge undertaking for businesses to figure out our tax system and be able to, to comply. And of course, we have people who are very happy to help even small businesses adjust. We will help people complete their returns in our office if necessary.
So with the business idea is that they would have to go through the state to get information about the local information.
Well, the other thing is, if you saw this, this was in, this is actually in a response from the Ohio Tax Department to another entity's inquiry or, you know, letter about this. And they actually stayed in there, that there would be an administrative fee, that's not just something that we think they might do, and that they would like to, what's the word I want, you know, standardize tax rates, which really limits us.
So much for local control.
It is, it is control, and so whatever they standardize it at, you know, the idea is to benefit businesses, but that.
Large businesses.
Right, right. And the, really, large ones probably operate under many different income tax, you know, requirements as it is. And there's also the electronic filing I mentioned in their Ohio Business Gateway, I don't know if you're all familiar, but that is a way that people go online through Ohio and pay their taxes. It's very convenient, and we are proceeding to the point where it's very easy to pay your taxes to the city. And just to put that in perspective, is the largest, the bulk of our income taxes from withholding taxes. And so that's, you know, pretty standard. It's a rate, you put it in there, every paycheck that's taken out, and that's what they pay. So it's not that every business has to have their own system, the taxes are what they are, and everybody who works is supposed to pay withholding taxes, so.
Kathy, when I think of how it works in the payroll system, basically you enter the zip code of the employee and it pulls the correct tax amount. So to claim that this is a huge burden is kind of specious.
It really is, but it boils down.
One point I'd like to make before you comment, though, is when I think about what we have brought a lot of income into the city recently, is the construction of Holzer, the construction of the nursing home, the construction of Bentley and all the other major renovations, and, you know, the different apartment complexes, and all the different contractors that have worked with that, I can only imagine how easy it will be for companies not to file and pay taxes.
Right, right, if they're our watchdog.
You and I have driven down to Holzer and wrote down the name of contractor trucks on the lot.
Right, and other people, city workers, code officers, report to us. We read the newspaper, look for ads for new businesses. It's much easier for us to try to track these things down. I've worked with the County Reporter to find out university construction and subcontractors. And the fact is, most businesses want to be compliant. I've received emails myself, and I know the tax department gets even more, just saying, you know, we're opening a new, you know, a new, you know, site in your town, what do I need to do? And we have a question note that they fill out, we give them an account number and any other information they want, and they're used to that. That's what businesses do. Another issue I think is the, is the money and the timing of that. We have a twenty-four hour rule where we have to deposit money that we receive, and we receive checks every single day in our office for people paying taxes. And of course, sometimes it's a lot of checks, like in April, but people who have large businesses pay their withholdings on a monthly basis, others pay it quarterly, and so that money goes into our bank overnight. Even if it's only in there overnight, we get what little interest is available now, but it still helps us. And I can't imagine that every day they would be turning that money around and sending us our share, so that we would have that in the bank. And so I see future cash flow problems because of that.
Can we put that in here, too?
I thought I'd put something in there about that, but I'll put it on my list to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
And I ought to have said it exactly that way, but.
Where is the timeline, when is collecting forward to the state because cash flow issues within the city deposits?
Is that a where is or is it?
Yes, a where is, two, three, four, this one down.
Okay, all right, so I've got two questions. What percentage of our taxpayers file returns? Is it about half? Because some just go with withholding, right?
Right, although most businesses would also have a business income that they would file for. However, I would say some of our, our biggest employer does not have that, but, so it's at least half, if not more. Any business also files a business return.
So this would be a really good deal for somebody. My understanding, and they're doing this also in Pennsylvania, is that part of the pressure for this came from something, I guess I need to clarify with you, you seem to imply, or somebody did in this group, that there's going to be a new level of state work on this, but I think they're gonna farm it out to accounting groups, aren't they?
Oh, sure.
Accounting firms? Yeah, and that's where the money will go, just as the state auditor, we once had a bevy of people that he'd bring down, and then now we're paying much larger fees.
That's a perfect example. The state used to audit the city of Athens, and in two thousand and four, when I started, they dropped us. And so now it's IPA, it's independent accounting firms that, that audit the city and many other entities in the state, so.
It sort of breaks the constituency politics, doesn't it?
So it's, yeah.
Just calling it what I think it is.
Well, I think you're exactly right. I had thought about that part, but that's true. There's no way that they're gonna pass this and all of a sudden be able to handle.
Probably wouldn't dream of it.
Five hundred and seventy-nine.
Privatization of tax collection is what it is. Yeah, and giving their buds who will pay you back some money.
What's the timeline issue on this change that they're putting in?
I don't know, and as I said before, they've been talking about it since last March, I believe is when I first started hearing about it. And they just were talking about it, and some, and I thought, I hoped maybe in August that it would die off, but anyway, then I started getting more, there's more articles in the, you know, like the Dispatch and other newspapers and conversations among tax accountants.
So should we pass this resolution quickly to?
Well, I would like it quickly, since, you know, you know, just because to get it out there. The Ohio Municipal League is also involved in this, and they are asking entities to do that. It's a different list, so there's our tax department from finance officers and council, but we're all related, and so they are asking for people to come forward and express their opinions.
Probably.
Yeah.
Any other comments for the auditor? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I do have one other miscellaneous issue in mind. It's actually just a comment, I'm gonna save to do it, but it is mid-September, and typically our budget planning for the next year starts the end of September or October. Just thought I'd give you a heads up. I'll talk to the finance committee, I guess, later, and the mayor put together a schedule for you to look at, and it'll be out there, so.
I brought it up at the staff meeting today. Really, we'll wait till the September numbers, but we have to start thinking about it until we start putting our wish list together and I'm sure well that it's not gonna be. It's a wish list.
More than ever.
More than ever. But the, the fact is that, you know, we have the half-year mark dollars from July revenue, your finance reports that you have. The next benchmark would be three quarters way through the city budget. I know that, I have to do some corrections along with gas and oil, et cetera, for the fund lines on that, but we're building, trying to build that up already, this discussion's going forward at that.
I know this is probably too early to ask, but any clue what carryover might be?
I couldn't tell you right now.
No.
We are just starting to, to look at, to look at that. We posted the ordinances from last week. We will be amending our resources, which you know about this from last week, where we unappropriated the five hundred thousand dollars in the revolving loan fund that we don't need, and down in five eighty-nine, the art grant funds of four hundred and sixty-two thousand. And so that will reduce our, our resources, our estimated resources, once we get that filed, which will be probably in the next few days with the county. So as the mayor said, towards the end of this month, we'll be three quarters of the way through, and we'll have a better idea.
Mayor, did you hear something else?
Oh, yes, I gave you some paperwork for the finance committee on the subordination of a loan. This has been done before. I actually signed off on it because it was August and you guys went around. Again, this is somebody refinancing a house, and we all parted the loan, this is through the chip grant. I think the paperwork shows that it's been, it was done two thousand and six, was it, or earlier, I think? It's just a refinance, and I just need to, I gave you also examples of two of the ordinances that have been done in the past. I think Nancy would say it's, it's been done before, you've seen it before. The way it works, of course, is that this is for down payment assistance of some kind, and if they're trying to transfer things over, we have to release it so they can actually refinance.
And.
Get it up for a reading and ordinance?
Yeah, okay.
And our position doesn't change?
No.
So.
Okay, one last thing, quickly, the mayor, the mayor, the auditor mentioned Ohio Municipal League. I think all of us, council members got the mailing from the Ohio Municipal League. They do have their meeting coming up in October. I went to that meeting several years ago, and it, they do have sessions for council members, especially new council members, so anybody that was interested, I think we probably could come up with some money to help with that. It's in October. Thank you, that's it.